Joining us, The Columbian is pleased to meet with candidates for Clark County Council, Position Four. I'm Greg Jane, the editorial page editor at The Columbian, and I will let the other editorial board members introduce themselves, Scott and Jody.
I'm Scott Campbell, recently retired publisher and still a member of the editorial board.
And then Ben?
And Ben Campbell, publisher of The Columbian and newest member of the editorial board.
Great, and as mentioned previously, we are recording this, we will post it unedited on our website. Now we'll move on to the important people, the candidates. Take for now just one to two minutes to introduce yourselves, explain why you are running for this position, and then we'll move on to specific policy questions. Sam, we'll start with Matt.
Okay, great. Thanks so much for this opportunity. During COVID, there are very few opportunities to directly connect with voters face to face, especially the way that I'm campaigning with a mask and gloves, so this is very much appreciated. Again, I'm Matt Little, running as an independent for Clark County Council, District Four. I live in Fern Prairie Market area with my wife and kids in unincorporated Clark County. My background is I've worked with both parties on Capitol Hill back before they called it the swamp, and back when things used to work a little bit better, especially for independents. I spent the last seventeen years here in the Pacific Northwest working for and running nonprofit organizations. But why I'm running is because I'm trying to create an even better Clark County for all of our kids, all of us, so that our kids can grow up and have good jobs and thrive, basically. I have a very specific plan, a plan that's being used right now in six different counties in Washington and in thirty-plus different states. It's a plan where we can preserve our rural character, we can protect private property rights, we can compensate landowners without using taxpayer dollars, and we can build up our urban areas and create new town centers that are more walkable and create local jobs and have more affordable homes. So that's why I'm running. I am an independent, which is really helpful for this position, which is a nonpartisan position. We work on fixing roads, determining zoning and planning for the future, so I feel like I'm perfectly situated for that kind of a job. I listen, I value other perspectives, and I believe strongly in making sure that there's public input in our public decisions. So I hope people will check me out on my website and read a little bit more, mattlittleforclarkcounty.org. Thanks.
Great, thank you. And Gary?
Thank you very much, Gary Medge. I am in the council position right now, and it is very much a partisan position, although most of our work tends to be nonpartisan, and I have been working in a nonpartisan way with our, particularly our legislative delegation, to get some fixes at the state level on some of Clark County's issues. So I would welcome Matt's ideas on some of his land use. I researched some of them, some of them may not work with GMA, and right now we've worked pretty hard to be compliant with the GMA. And, you know, everybody's got a great idea of how everyone else's property should be used or rezoned or taken care of. But I've been in the job every day, working hard. We have a lot of issues, most of the comp plant update issues that we're just starting in a new cycle with shoreline management and the buildable lands model. You know, most of the problems we have in the county initiated in the eighties, before the GMA was born. We've been doing a fairly good job to get caught up and to correct some of the past inequities. I'm here with my wife of thirty-six years, also in the Fern Prairie area. Hopefully, we're not weighed too heavily for the district. I do travel through the district. I haven't been much campaigning at all because of the pandemic and the fact that I just campaigned last year. It seems like nonstop campaigning, so went a little easier this year. I would tell you, I'm running for one reason. When our manager quit, left, and then the pandemic hit, and that was about the same time that filing decisions had to be made. And I felt like it was a call to arms, a call to service. I didn't want to look like I was jumping ship just when the county probably needed me most. So that's why I wanted to run again, to continue the work I've been doing. I've been advocating for all my constituents regardless of party, and that means regardless of district as well. Someone comes to me with a problem with the executive branch, I take it on if I think it has merit. I at least get answers for our constituents throughout the county. I'm here to serve our county. I'm in the job for one purpose, to do the best I can to better Clark County. We have four children ourselves, one of, two are serving in the military, one's in DC now, the other's up at Fort Lewis, up in Washington State together with my son-in-law. I love this state, I love this area, I love Clark County, and I do too want to preserve the rural nature as much as we can. You know, the GMA isn't a stop growth, it isn't a slow growth, it is a smart growth tool, and it's a good one, and I'm doing my best to work with it, as the rest of the county council is. And as you know, we are in good graces with the Growth Management Act presently, and I intend to keep it that way. Thank you.
So Gary, I have a quick question. Earlier, you made me think that maybe you weren't considering to run again. Is that, is that what you meant?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I was retired just a couple of years ago, and I was kind of looking forward to going back to retirement, so I was considering not running again. But I really felt it was my civic duty, if you will, something that has been a strong motivator for me throughout my entire career. I've been in public service for three decades. But yes, I had retired, most of my friends and family were saying, why aren't you retired? And so I was thinking about it. So the timing of the pandemic, the managers' quick departure, were all impetus for me to say, no, I gotta stay, I've got to continue this work.
Okay, thank you.
Right, thank you. Let's start out with the pandemic and how the county is going to address that and react to that. What steps need to be taken? We'll start with Gary.
Well, beyond the steps we're already taking, so we're amplifying, hopefully, we're really advocating for our full share of the CARES Act funding. We've been promised up to about forty percent of it right now, but we still haven't seen the details on the additional money beyond the twenty-six million originally allocated. A good portion of that went directly to the Health Department to hire independent help on the tracing, testing, supplies, PPE, all, you name it. We put money into the homeless population to protect them, to house them, rent stabilization to help prevent people from being evicted but not put the landlords in a poor position. We have small business grants, not loans, that we're working right now for minority businesses, particularly small businesses under five. We're now working, now that we think we're going to have more money as well, at the larger group of small businesses, you know, fifty or less employees and a wide variety. So we're trying to get partners in being able to spend that money. We think we will be able to carry that out. We're providing medical care as well as testing resources to all, whether indigent, whether they've got medical coverage or not. We've been assured by the Health Department, we've already appropriately funded that. There have been some initiatives, if your report is event paying attention, I've been beaten on this drum since February, that we're not doing enough for testing and making it available to the average person, for congregant settings, for protecting our seniors, our care homes, to test on a daily basis, or at least on a regular basis, all the caregivers that go in and out of those facilities. We haven't done that. We've done that somewhat with the homeless, the hotel facility that we've provided, and we've done that to some extent at our jail as well. But expanding on a testing program, we really should look again at doing that. Football teams are doing it. You've written in your sports section about the Pac-12. You know, those teams are testing daily in order to play football in college. We should be able to protect our seniors, our homeless, all of our congregant care work, people who are in working environments that keep them close together. We should be able to provide daily, if not weekly, testing for them to ensure that they're not carrying the disease. So it's something I'm going to continue to pursue, I hope to get some headway soon.
Thank you. Matt, how should the county approach the pandemic?
Yeah, this is obviously the critical issue right now. There are so many people having a tough time, businesses and families, and so getting on top of this is key. Being an example for Clark County is also really important. Voters should know that the Clark County Council is also the Board of Health. And so when you're on the Board of Health, you want to be enforcing the laws and the standards that are set by the scientists. And so what I would be doing on the Board of Health is what I'm doing right now, being safe out there with masks at all times, at all meetings. I actually was fishing on the Columbia last week and the week before, and I was wearing masks out there, and it was a little awkward. No one else on the river was wearing it except for my friends on the boat, but we were protecting each other, and that's what masks do. And they don't just protect each other, they protect our families, our kids, and our elderly parents. So this is a very important issue, and it's important for the Board of Health, the council, and the counselors to be examples in enforcing the laws. And so Gary and the chair attended an event just last week, a rally for Culp, and there were a ton of people out there. There wasn't a single mask, and you can see in Lackamas' interview that Gary and others are talking very closely within six feet of other people, totally violating their own standards. So I would not do that. Public health and safety is so important, and it's the only way that we're going to get back on top of this and get businesses back working, people back working. And I just noticed at the Board of Health meeting this week that we're back in the red category, and I wonder if that meeting contributed to that.
Gary, is that accurate, have there been times where you've not used a mask in a public setting?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question. Could you repeat it?
Is that accurate, there have been times where you've not worn a mask in a public setting?
No, it's just divisive politics by the Democratic Party, of which Matt is a firm plant, despite him calling himself an independent.
But is that true, have there been times?
Yeah, let me set the record straight on what he just said. First of all, it's very important what he said, wearing masks. We should do that. The only real safeguard from this pandemic, global pandemic, is staying separated from people entirely until we have cures, a vaccine, at least an opportunity to take a vaccine, different treatments. Staying away is the most important thing. Wearing a mask is an important thing. I have been, I have not been campaigning, I haven't been out. I have been staying home. I have an eighty-eight, eighty-nine-year-old mom, she just turned eighty-nine. I'm more elderly myself, so I'm staying at home. I don't go out shopping, except rarely. I've had only a few essential meetings that I've needed to go to. I've always worn my N95 mask and kept my distance. Now, as far as rules getting into private residences, and this was not a rally, this was an invite by a local neighbor to come to, to meet a potential person running for governor. And so everyone there made their own choices. There were people wearing masks. Some people asked me, should I wear a mask? And I said, absolutely, you should. Now, before, I had been in isolation, self-isolation. I have been tested several times, I was tested just before this event. I was not endangering anyone. I knew I did not have the disease. And then, when I came home, I remained in isolation, retested through PCR, and basically, I'm still in isolation, but I waited through that quarantine period and for the test result to ensure that I was not a danger to anyone. So I took all the steps, and I think any rule reaching into a private residence, whether you're in martial law or not, would be unconstitutional. That's an overreach, and it's overbroad to be able to say how many people can pray in their own home with other people, how many families could be there. So I think, you know, it hasn't been challenged anywhere, but I want to assure the public, I believe in the science. We are not in the red. It's a mixed bag. We have, all of our hospital capacity remains stable, and it has been flat as far as remaining in the green. These metrics are shifting, they may shift again when the state decides to do so. They are not firmly set in science. You can't look up in any book and say, how many positive tests, how many active KESP per hundred thousand in the last fourteen days should there be to be safe? There's, there's no metric set in stone, and the governor understands that, and that's why he has been moving the metrics around since the very beginning of this. That's primarily what the discussion was about yesterday. I followed up with another email today with him on that hundred thousand number for the last two weeks, proposing a different alternative to propose to the state on how to calculate our infection rates, which are generally very low right now.
I want to follow up on that. Regarding the event in question with gubernatorial candidate Lauren Culp, you say you responded to an invitation from a neighbor. How many people were there?
I have no earthly idea, and it was outside. I will tell you the truth, I did have a mask, and I was more concerned about the smoke outside than I was about being in and around people, because I knew I was going to isolate. I'm in great health, I'm a hiker, I'm a backpacker, I just came out of the woods, in fact. So I, and I know very well that my health is solid, and I was not going to endanger anyone. I have no idea how many people were there. I was invited by the Clark County Women's Republican Group.
Well, I don't know, was it closer to four people, or forty, or four hundred?
Well, it was not four hundred, I can guarantee. I would say best estimate, hundred, maybe hundred fifty, I don't know. You'd have to ask the Women's Republican Party, because they were signing people in, so they would have a better idea of what the attendance was. I know they limited the attendance to some extent, but I don't know what the numbers were.
And one other thing, you say you're confident that you were not endangering anybody else. Are you confident they were not endangering you?
No, I was not. That's why I stayed isolated, and that's why I had already planned to have a PCR test again. So I made that conscious choice myself. It's my own personal risk management choice, whether, because I wanted to meet Lauren Culp. I wanted to see him, see what he was like, and see if he was a viable candidate for governor. So, yeah, so the simple answer is, yeah, I believe in the science, I believe in masks. I was, again, more nervous about the smoke, because I value my lungs as well. And when I was out and about my property during that time period, I was wearing an N95, and primarily staying indoors all time. So the smoke was the more immediate threat as far as I was concerned. You know, I was able to distance as much as possible throughout that meeting. I stepped, you know, we were always outside, at least I was, always staying to the periphery. So, yeah, I was, I was a little cautious about it, taking prudent steps that Dr. Melnick would have been proud of. Of course, he would not want a meeting like this whatsoever.
I guess I'm just confused, because I don't feel like we're really getting an answer here. Were you wearing a mask or not? Were you holding the mask, or were you wearing the mask?
Okay, well, I don't know why you'd be confused. I had a mask that I was wearing when I walked up. I took it off when I saw predominantly people weren't wearing masks, and I also wanted to be able to talk to people. By the way, I do have an exemption from wearing a mask by the governor's own proclamation. I have a hearing disability, which is service-connected. And so I took it off and put it in my pocket for the rest of the event and did my best to social distance, but that was pretty much impossible. I isolated myself afterwards, and I tested myself through a local healthcare provider.
Okay, so, yes, thank you, and I have a follow-up. So if you were to do this again, would you follow those same steps, or would you wear a mask throughout the whole of that?
Okay, I have absolutely no regrets in what I did. And that was the singular event I've done in the last three or four months. I went on a couple motorcycle rallies with Patriot Guard rider in support of law enforcement, but we were on motorcycles, outside, socially distanced. I did have a mask, but didn't need to use it, because, except one occurrence with Washtugal Police Chief, I did put my mask back on. But, you know, this is a private residence, and we do make our own choices, and everyone there did. And some people did, I'm sorry that Matt didn't see people wearing masks, but there were people there wearing masks. The vast majority did not. That was their choice. I'm hopeful that they took good prudent steps. If anyone became infected, I don't know that, I haven't heard that. It certainly is not something that has contributed to any of our numbers right now. I'm on the Board of Health, I get that data. We see where the positive tests come up, and I haven't seen any from this event, or for that matter, for any other events, whether they're demonstrators downtown in Vancouver, friendly rallies for law enforcement, you name it. I haven't seen any of those outbreaks. I've seen them in congregant work settings, factory-like settings, chiropractic business, which is a tragedy. That's really awful, and I wish we could have prevented that a little bit better. But, so I'm hoping I answer your question, but I have no event I'm planning I'm going to. Again, I'm kind of pretty much staying to myself and my house, so, because I want to be able to visit my mom comfortably, and, you know, and I don't want to be a carrier, and I don't want to expose anybody else. It is for other people. Matt made a good point on that, it's for other people.
Now, along those lines, you did, early in the pandemic, you referred to the governor's shutdown order as martial law. Would you stand by that characterization?
You know, you guys, no, I did not. And I pretty much said the same thing I just said here. It was martial law-like. I was trying to give examples of how it wasn't martial law, and we shouldn't be treated as if we were in martial law. I just mentioned it again, because even if we were in martial law, that wouldn't give anyone the right to just enter into a private residence and put restrictions on people. So that was a campaign piece. I will admit, I was not very articulate, I was just talking outside my barn about life experiences, because I have experienced martial law during the late sixties in several instances. And also, I ever said coming out of that is, this is not martial law, we shouldn't be treated with it. My points have always been this, and they've been consistent. We have lost the ability to govern locally. We have, and that was my comment, talked to the hand the other day during the Board of Health. We have no, virtually no input to the state Health Department that's responded to. So whether it's construction inequities and inconsistencies, or whether it's more, currently, we're fighting over restaurant protocols to try to keep them alive, keep them in business in a safe way. But we're not, we don't have an avenue, a way to impact that locally. We've been, I've no, we had to negotiate with the state over motocross use, recreational use in the eastern part of the county, which is almost right in Skamania, which is in a different phase. So it's the loss of our ability to locally have input into the rules that we need here. We have never come close to overwhelming our hospitals here. And if we were doing the testing I'd like to be doing, we could more safely operate, the restaurants could, if their staff were testing regularly, chiropractic employees, if they were testing regularly, we can do that. You know, if a college football team can afford, or professional sports, I understand the basketball was doing it as well, we should be able to do it for our citizens. And it's all in part tied to the additional sixty percent of the millions of dollars that we've been shorted by the state right now on the CARES Act funding. So, you know, I never, Greg, I never, and I complained directly to you that day, because I thought that was a very unfair blog that one of your reporters did. You know, it was one conversation where I clearly said we were not in martial law, but this is martial law. Yeah, I was not very concise, I wasn't reading from a script, a prepared script, I was just talking off the top of my head. So I apologize for that confusion that may have resulted, the same way.
I'm glad we got to clarify that.
I just want to make one other comment, because, yes, and it was kind of said today that I walked back my comment about talking to the hand about Dr. Melnick. I didn't walk back any comments. My comment was taken out of context. I was criticizing the process for us to have give and take with the state medical leaders right now. Dr. Melnick is our only avenue, and if you're not aware of this, most of this stuff happens in private by phone call with all the county healthcare directors. There's no political involvement whatsoever, there's no votes. It's just the doctors talking about themselves as to what they would like to see happen. So I don't think that's the way this should work. And I hope we're learning these lessons, and once our legislature ever gets back into session, I hope they take some steps to change some laws, so we don't have this unending Phase Two kind of possibility.
Well, and thank you for clarifying, and let's move on here. Matt, in looking ahead how the county addresses this, would you be in favor of taking the allowable 1% property tax levy increase?
Yeah, that's a, that's a tough question in an abnormal year like this one. I would say in a normal year, you know, voters should know that we're limited to this 1% increase in taxes this, each year. But in a normal year, property values and inflation go up over 1%. So that's what we call a structural deficit. We don't bring in enough money to cover the infrastructure and the services that we need to provide. So this year, businesses and families, people are having a tough time just bringing in income, and it's hard to say this early what I would decide. I would take the data when it comes in, find out what people's situation are, and make a decision there. But I have heard from the counselors that the budget is already pretty tight, and this 1% has been really important, and for the years that they haven't taken the 1%, they've fallen behind. And they have taken some good measures by doing hiring freezes and such, but I wouldn't want to say one way or another now, but I am an independent with a really balanced perspective, so I would be taking all these things into account when the decision has to be made.
In a normal year, would you definitely take that increase?
In a normal year, I would be most likely to do that, because you have to somehow try to keep up with the services and the growth that's happening in the community. Otherwise, we'll have potholes and infrastructure, we can't accommodate the growth that we're building, and things will fall behind, services will fall behind, enforcement will fall behind, our jails, our enforcement officers, they need these services, they need the funding. And so in a normal year, I would be likely to go with the majority of the counselors who vote for the 1%.
Gary, what are your thoughts about the 1% permissible increase?
Yeah, this is a really important question, and so I absolutely totally disagree with one aspect of what Matt just said. It has been the narrative over the years. I've only been here four years, but in my research, it's pretty much been a steady beat that we have this structural narrative. And it is the Democrat mantra that we need to continue to increase taxes, no question about that, and this is a partisan seat. I will tell you, the Democratic Legislative Caucus right now is working on lifting that 1% cap, looking at two, three, perhaps four or 5% if they can get to it, to lift that cap. So here's where the narrative is false. This is what I've discovered in talking to our financial managers, our B encounters here in the county. If we take that 1% every year, we will still have a structural deficit. It does not solve our structural deficit. Raising, and it's all cumulative, and any tax or fee that we raise, and unfortunately, we just raised fees again, I voted against it the other day on our health fees. Here's where we're missing out, and this is something that I've been leading on in the council. I have met in a bipartisan way with our local legislative Democratic representatives to try to support what is best for Clark County. We have a tax structure throughout the state that primarily works pretty well, except except for Clark County. And that's what you've heard as tax leakage. We are adjacent to the Portland metropolitan area and too many people shop there. We can do everything we can in our powers to say, buy locally, please shop locally. But we still have scalfe laws buying cars and registering them there. We lose about 25%. 25% of our general fund to tax loss. This tax leakage. So what I've been proposing, and I've had some support with some of our local Democratic legislators, because it makes sense. If we could retain 0.18% of our sales tax, not increasing tax, just sending that much less to Olympia, we would, we would make up for that 25 million. We would eliminate the structural deficit with that single legislative change. Now, that's a hard pull, especially with everything that's happening this year. And we are situated unlike any other county. Any of the other border counties do not have the problem to the extent we do. They may have it in a graduated way. So I was trying to get to some legislation that may have a formula to provide some relief for some of the other border counties. But if they were to just focus and correct our problem, our loss of 25% and you know, our property taxes are holding steady. Our other revenue to some extent has dropped off, but been mitigated by cost savings. Like jail, our jails inmate population is about half of what it was. We're not getting the revenue to maintain those inmates, but we're saving a lot of money in not having them there. But if we just focus on our county and our loss, it would not impact Olympia whatsoever. I mean, it is interest to them. It is not, would not be a real big financial hit to them. But getting statewide support in the legislature to fix Clark County, I don't, until we get a Republican governor or get a majority in the Senate, that's going to be almost an impossible thing. But that's where the structural deficit comes from. So to all, anyone who's listening to this, please shop locally. And I might add, the pandemic to some extent has helped ameliorate the loss of sales tax for the county because people are all shopping on Amazon. Where actually, we took a hit about just less than $2 million on our sales tax and that lags by about two months. But it wasn't as bad as we thought it would be because people are shopping by mail and we're getting those sales taxes. So I mean, that's not really a silver lining, but at least helped our budget.
We're okay. Back to the question, would you take the 1% property tax levy increase?
Yeah, so I think Matt is spot on. And I know my, the person that ran against me last year ran on a no tax platform. You know, that's not responsible.
So by spot on you, so you say this year, you probably wouldn't.
I'm sorry, I thought I heard Matt to say he would want to see the budget and see if it was needed before. And Sophie hits the Clark County Council. I'm hoping he doesn't automatically just raise taxes, but really sees if we need to do it or not. You know, we're going to fill potholes. Our jail staff has all of the resources they need. We're not shorting anybody. We're going to be about $7 million short this year. We're going to dig into our strategic reserves a little bit. If things hold steady, we'll be able to absorb this one time hit without raising any more taxes for this year even. Next year, we don't know. We'll see what happens, how much longer we continue with the economic conditions that we have.
Now, and looking down the road more, obviously there are pandemic and the county finances are the problem. But looking long, Matt, you touched upon your thoughts on land use. Why don't you talk about that?
Oh, great, thank you. Because that's the big reason why I'm running. As Gary mentioned, the Growth Management Act is amended every eight years. That would happen during my term if I am so lucky to win this election. And the, the thing that I'm planning is a, goes right in line with the requirements of the Growth Management Act planning. What we would do is we would sit down with city leaders, and I've already talked to a majority or almost a majority of the city leaders Battleground, Camas, Washugal, Vancouver and Yakal, and trying to get buy-in to sit down and do a planning process that's beyond the 20 years that the GMA requires. So how they do it now is they look ahead 20 years and they see the growth that they project. And you have to incorporate that growth. You have to provide development and homes for all those people. Well, what that ends up doing, only looking 20 years into the future, is what I see is incremental growth. You end up just pushing out incrementally the urban growth boundaries and you build on the next available lot that's available to you. If you look out 50 or 100 years as I'm proposing and sitting down with leaders who have unanimously so far agreed that this would be an approach that they would take if I win, we would sit down and get ahead of this growth by looking at what 100 years of growth would look like. And that forces us to make some really important decisions. It makes us have to, in order to protect the rural character that Gary and I both want to protect, we would have to look at corridors of urban, of rural areas where the rural economy is strong, where there'd be shared services and where their soils are good, where open space is really important. And you would find these areas and you would, you would use deed restrictions. You would compensate landowners for these deed restrictions that they would voluntarily take. So you use this market incentive tool. You pay landowners to protect their private property rights and keep the land rural. And those are the areas that you put down on the map for your rural areas. This generates a credit that sits at a bank that developers can use to have more lucrative, more aggressive growth in the urban areas and outside of the urban growth boundaries where appropriate. And so what we would do on these maps is find where there's going to be the future redevelopments and new town centers where we want to have mixed development, where we want to have local jobs, more affordable homes, more mass transit options, and keep it in a smaller footprint while protecting the rural areas. And by looking way out into the future, we do that. So the developers actually take the option voluntary, just like the rural landowner, to take, buy this credit in order to do development that's on the map. They have two options. They can do exactly what current zoning allows them to do, or they can take us up on this incentive to build, say, mixed development use with condos and townhomes instead of single family in the urban core. And they're going to make more money off of it. And the pro formas that I've seen, it's just a fraction of their total construction costs. And that's why developers actually like this. And that's why I have developers who are endorsing me and giving money to my campaign as well as farmers, because everyone wins in this. It's working in six different counties right now.
Which counties are those?
These are the counties around the Puget Sound. So all the way from what come down to Pierce, even Island County. I don't think it's working as well in some of those counties. You can see a map of the protected rural areas and the grow, the urban areas that have been built up on King County's map. You'll see green dots and red dots. And to me, it's scattered. That's why I would want to look way into the future and try to cluster centers. And you also create the clustered rural areas so you can preserve the rural character and don't have a future situation where we just have heritage farms surrounded by seas of urban growth. That's the goal of this plan. You get ahead of the growth. It's a win-win for everyone. It's voluntary, it's market based, and it fits directly with the Growth Management Act plan.
And, and these areas are they, they're able to do that while, while staying within the GMA restrictions?
Yes, absolutely. And if you looked 100 years and you put opportunities on the map, you would obviously have to phase it in. So the First Amendment would have the first layer of, of growth opportunities in the urban areas and those first areas of rural character that you want to preserve. And then so on, every eight years.
Now, and Gary, you said you had looked into this. You said some of it's intriguing, some of it wouldn't work under the GMA, if I remember correctly?
Yeah, so let me make a couple of preliminary comments. So first of all, Matt had a campaign piece where he's working in a, walking around in a development in Camas, blaming the county council for the zoning that had occurred there that allowed those homes to be built. That was Camas, city of Camas, not the county. We had nothing to do with it, nor could we under the GMA. There's certainly, we have to work together with our cities on what their character is going to look like, how they want to push out, how they want to annex. And all the fringe areas are the problematic areas to, to the core city centers that exist now. And that development that Matt walked through is one of those. But the county had nothing to do with that. That just showed his lack of understanding of how the process works. So if someone living in Fern Prairie says, hey, I've got mine, I want to keep it. Everyone else can be in an apartment building or a condo. Yeah, I got that attitude. I don't think we want to look like the Puget Sound or the greater Seattle area. We don't want to look at, look like that. Now, primarily what he just described is exactly what the GMA mandates and it's exactly the process we go through. Now, the devils are in the detail as far as projections. And we haven't gotten to that fight yet or that discussion when we get those population increase projections by the state. And obviously, they're not going to give us a projection for 100 years or 50 years as the GMA requires the projections that they do give us. They give us a low, medium and high, with the medium being the presumptive density that we're going to have to try to work into our comprehensive plan. So that aspect doesn't sit real well because of the detail in it. And it sounds like this, you know, this, no one, no one in the cities has ever participated in this in any great extent. Now, when you start getting subsidies, and we do have a conservation plan, we have legacy money that we're putting into preserving important places. And I weighed into that, you know, Horseshoe Falls is one, the Lacamas Meadows is another. We are preserving for the public benefit, critical areas and open space areas with, with the funding that we have available for conservation futures. I don't know where we're going to get this money that he's talking about to give, to put deed restrictions on. And then how many properties could we do that? And then are we going to have rural people saying, I want it? And the county saying, well, we can't afford that or we can't give it to you? You know, I don't see it being able to work at all in the detail or how we can afford it. And I have one alibi from the last one because it gets to cost. You know, we're all trying to get the inventory up to lower costs. And, you know, we have, if you talk to the constituents around the county, most people are appalled of how much their property is assessed every year. That does not cause a structural deficit. You know, paying property taxes, it's a natural thing to have them assessed. And people really are railing against how much their property values have been going up and paying. That does buffer keeping pace with, with the cost of goods and services that the county has to pay. So the assessment process works. It's well stabilized. And I know I get it quite often that people are very unhappy and want to appeal the assessor's determination of their valued property.
Okay, I'm going to cut you off there. And Matt, you want to follow up on what Gary said?
Yeah, I do, because the first step in some of those developments, even on, even in the Camas boundary, the first step is a, is a county. The county decides where the urban growth boundaries, where the urban holdings for the future city lines are going to be. And so the county is involved in that decision very highly. And so that's why, you know, this is an important factor for a county counselor that we do, if I was elected, have a big say in where these lines are. And so this is just an extra tool. This doesn't change anything in the existing zoning. It's another tool. And the things that Gary is worried about, each community can be customizable. We can fit something to fit Clark County. It's not a one size fits all and it's just a Puget Sound thing because it's in the Puget Sound. It's actually a growth management tool that gets us ahead of incremental growth. It's a good thing for us. I'd be really proud to chair it. And I've been working on a lot of politics to make sure that the local leaders are interested in doing it as well. So.
And let's move ahead real quick. Because we have a lot of things we aren't going to get to actually. But I'm curious, what are your thoughts about transportation infrastructure and specifically a bridge? Would you prefer a third crossing or prefer a replacement to the I-5 Bridge? Gary, what are your thoughts?
Okay, so just the way you frame the question is wrong. And that's what I've been trying to fight on the RTC. Everyone, because of the CRC failure, is so afraid to talk about future planning because it may detract from the I-5 Bridge. Absolutely. Capital assets are time limited. And this one is a drawbridge on a major strategic roadway that goes from Mexico to Canada. It should not be there. It impedes commerce on the Colombian. And it's traffic hindrance when it's up. So it needs to be replaced. We're going through a repair right now. Those costs of maintenance and repairs are going to continue to go up. And, you know, it's there, it's working. There's no rush on it, but it should have been replaced years ago. So I am absolutely in favor of replacing the I-5 Bridge. We need a nice, modern bridge. Although it has a, an industrial time look to it. And I mean, it's almost like a historical piece. It really adds to the skyline.
Then we can put it in a museum, maybe.
Yeah, but yeah, it needs to be replaced. But it is, I think it's approaching malfeasance. And I've been trying to approach my fellow RTC members, as well as Matt Ratson and the others that work on the RTC. We need to plan ahead. We can't just ignore the fact that we need a third corridor. Looking ahead, and if you follow what Matt would like to do, looking ahead 100 years, you really don't need to look ahead that long. I mean, people are fed up with the congestion today. Anytime there's rain, an accident, law enforcement action, something happens on a bridge. Boy, we have gridlock and it's getting worse and worse. The commute every day is getting longer and it's approaching the secondary streets. It's causing a carbon footprint that should not be there. We need to plan in earnest. They did the visioning study years ago. They updated that a couple of times. And every time the vision is said, we need another corridor.
I'm going to move on to Matt. Matt, your thoughts on the bridge?
Yeah, I don't have much different to say. I know that I-5 Bridge is key to fix. I was just on a call with regional business leaders on a summit on this. It was an Oregon, Washington effort to talk about what, what we're going to do next. The key here is funding. And we're not, we're not getting the funding committed to it that we need to do just one bridge. So we have to start with I-5 Bridge. It has some structural issues that are key that we have to address now. But we shouldn't not plan for the future, as Gary said. We have to do both. And, yeah, I believe that we have to actually speak as one voice on the county council and get more of a voice in this decision. I think Oregon's controlling a lot of the decisions that are made, whether there's going to be tolls or not. And we need to speak with one voice and we need to get more into the fight for, for our citizens, our residents in Clark County.
So Matt, sorry, real quick. You said the key is to fix the bridge. Do you mean replace it or fix it, the I-5?
It looks like it needs replacing. I'm not an expert, but it's going to cost a lot of money. And that's why I'm saying the money is the key right now to replace the bridge.
Scott, Jody, Ben, any? Should we, well, move ahead then, actually, there's some to get to, but that's okay. We don't have all day. Give us your final pitch should support you and feel free to mention statements that you would like. We'll start with Gary.
Well, I'm in it for you. I'm here to serve you. I had decades of training on how to make decisions and how they're best informed. So you're getting someone who's worked overseas internationally with, at the embassy level, with ministerial level, cabinet level people. with, at the embassy level, with ministerial level, cabinet level people. I mean, I, I know how to make decisions. I've been trained in it and I'm, I have no ulterior motive. I have nothing other than to make good decisions for Clark County. And I, I would welcome Matt, regardless of how this election turns out, to come to me. I heard, I heard early on in his campaign that he had approached other county counselors with his ideas on how he would like to keep Clark County rural. He never approached me and I, I am all ears. And as I am with the entirety of the community. So I'd like to hear your ideas in detail to see if they're workable. I mean, we, on a daily basis, we have disagreement on everything. Right now, working on the Buildable Lands Model, we have disagreement from the community, from Clark County United, to even the stakeholders that are meeting, disagreeing with our hired consultant. I mean, it's hard to get agreement and hard to sort through the details. The devils are always in the details, but I have an open ear to it. He mentioned he had some developer support. BIA has supported me. They know my position well and the actions I've been taking over the year to help have smart development throughout the county. I'm trying to adjust the homeless situation and all these things are related because housing affordability depends on, on inventory. It depends on a mix, just like Matt said. And we're doing our best to put that mix out there of different densities and different valued property to make it accessible to more people. I want to push for, and pushing on our mental health treatment, our therapeutic courts, our drug treatment, and all those things weigh into what we do with our jail and how many bed spaces we need. If we have jail alternatives that are working, diversions that are working, basically non-jail. And as you can see, we pretty much have half the population in our jail right now. Holy Grail is public safety and we're maintaining that. These are all decisions by the judges, the prosecuting attorney and the sheriff. But they are working and they're working hard on it. I'm on some of the committees that are looking at those issues. So public safety is key. Resourcing a new jail will be coming up. That'll come before a public vote. We'll have to do it by bond. So everyone will weigh into whatever we decide on and it'll most likely be a remodel. So I, I have no political agenda other than to serve you. And I take that to heart. I humbly appreciate everyone's support and, and would appreciate their vote on the 3rd of November. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
Yeah. I am just really excited to run for this office. I've been running since January. And before Gary made a decision on February 29th, 28th, I sent an email to you, Gary. And I asked you if we could sit down because we might have some common values that we could talk about. And you responded back that you were personally offended that I was running against you. This was before you were running.
Yeah, that's not true. That's a false statement.
Yeah, well, anyway, I could read the email right here.
Yeah, read the whole email.
Okay. Always happy to meet and talk about issues, but it is offensive that you already announced that you're running against me. "I am serving the, with a true heart, coming out of retirement, extensive resume of service to help my constituents of all party affiliation. Sounds like you have a goal of firing without cause, especially since you don't represent an opposing party." Now, I am working very closely with the other counselors and I have been. John Blum, Julie Olson and Temple, I consider them friends and they're doing a really great job. It's been a tough year for families and businesses. And if, if I get elected, I want to do everything I can to help. I have an incredible list of supporters and endorsements. Gary has BIA, but I have all the rest. I have the farmers, the Washington Farm Bureau. I have the teachers, the Washington Education Association. I have all of labor. I have the electricians, the plumbers, the longshore workers, the warehouse workers, Central Labor Council, the building trades. I have the Washington Conservation Voters. I have the Hunter's Heritage Council. I have so many local leaders and business leaders. They're all on my website at mattlittlerclarkcounty.org. And I have a strong plan for the future of Clark County and Gary doesn't. That is a straight quote from Mark Bolt, who was the last independent counselor who I respect very much. And the quote from Nan Henrichsen is that, "I listen and I value differing perspectives." That's very important to me. And those quotes are on my website. I'm an independent and this is a very independent race. This is very different than the president or the governor or a legislator that has partisan decisions every day. This is not a partisan position. I'm asking folks to not vote party line for this position where we're making decisions on infrastructure and county services that people need. You should vote the person, the candidate. So with that, I hope that you please check out my website, mattlittlerclarkcounty.org. Please volunteer, donate, and please do not forget to vote. Thank you so much for your time.
Great. Matt and Gary, thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you both.
Thank you, gentlemen.